We're having a call.
Hey Rex Millers here.
Or Vander Mellen.
Mark Daly.
Jennifer Worsing, City of Kusbay.
Greg Hamilton, City of Kusbay.
Lance Doyle, City of Kusbay.
And Amy Edman, City of Kusbay.
Do we want to go ahead and get our guest logged in? Noted.
Cricket didn't find the Earth's comment. Okay.
Good. Thank you. So go ahead Cricket, go ahead.
So, um, so two years ago, we have a lovely picture of Joe Benetti and Roger Craddock holding a little baby tree because last year that was supposed to be the tree that was going to get planted for Arbor Day and then Jim Topolmire brought trees and that happened instead. So I didn't want to let the time go by without thinking about what we were going to do this year. Um, I know it's scheduled for April twenty on Friday, April twenty-sixth and, um, we have the move, the second generation or whatever you want to call them, moon trees available. So if you have, which is a dug fir, if you have a place to, uh, put them, um, the swap is going to have a tree planted earlier and the Oregon Department of Forestry has already reached out to me because the state forester, I don't know how to pronounce Kel McMoatto, lives in Kusbay and they would like to do something to highlight what's going on up there. So I'm, I'm mostly coming to sort of remember and don't know what other things I would need to do and what planning we can do ahead of time, finding a spot for a dug fir, things like that. And here to answer any questions you have.
So that was for the, uh, that, that was, that fellow was with the Oregon Department of Forestry?
Yes. And I can send you his name. It's Jim Harris-Bach. We, we've worked with him in the past and he heard from the forester that actually did the grafting and was babysitting the trees. And so that, it's his interest. So he reached out to us to see if they could make Arbor Day something special.
Sure. Well, I think we'll read back to the city.
Yeah, we'll, uh, city will, uh, will work with you.
Okay.
To get that information.
Yeah, just wanted to, you know, because sometimes the tree board is somewhat involved with it too. So.
They are definitely involved with the Arbor Day celebration. I think, uh, last year we had, uh, I think one or two members of the tree board that were out planting trees with us. So we hope that tradition carries.
And, and the, um, the swap would like their tree delivered on, I don't know how to say, March twenty-fifth. And we might have to look for our good friend to help deliver it because Doug's maybe going to be gone with Lou. So we said, you know, we could pick a day, but.
And they're just the moon trees, right?
No, they need to come off Grandma's porch.
Okay. Okay.
And just one.
And they have a place to plant it.
They have, I don't know where their places. They have a place to plant it. We've kind of looked at a couple of places here. The biggest thing was identifying them so they don't get cut down instantly.
Yeah.
And some signage and we'll provide some signage. And then Jamie Faraday is looking at a place over at Millicoma Marsh, maybe for another one that we could do with, um, with the schools over there with Millicoma East Side. So they would, so there'd be a number of trees and there's some of this, a couple of the same generation. One's planted up in Milsonville and they use that as sort of a highlight of their birthday program every year and it's doing well. And then there's another one planted down in Cave Junction. Um, so there's a couple of them out there, but we, we offered these to other communities, but it seemed to be very popular.
How many do you have?
Many?
Okay.
We have, you know, maybe five, but we'll, we'll probably, another one will probably go to Cave Junction. Um, they're doing quite a bit down there with the moon trees and Stuart Ruzo was stationed there for the, um, when he was a, um, smoke junker.
That is so good.
And we, we are in contact with, um, Stuart Ruzo's, uh, son Christopher. And also these trees were originally, it might've worked out better, reading here, because these trees were originally, um, sent out as part of the bicentennial and sent with a message from four. So since this is the Sasquatch Centennial, it might be particularly inappropriate. Get that in there somehow, too.
How do you say that word again?
That, I have Jay Carina. That's the buttons they has.
Nice. Well, we look forward to having this conversation.
Okay.
Um, I think what's going to be a topic of conversation right at the next, uh, regular tree board meeting.
Okay, good.
Well, when's the next tree board meeting? We gotta get these things in. You know, they plant trees in the woods at the end of March, but yeah.
Yeah. So our next tree board meeting is, uh, I don't have a calendar.
March twenty-seven.
March twenty-seven.
Yeah, Doug, Doug was a little concerned that, that, that if you're actually planting trees at the end of April, depending on the weather, you know, it can be not the best thing for the trees.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I do know, uh, by proclamation, uh, the, the mayor has determined that the last Friday of the month of April is our observance of Arbor Day. Uh, and so, um, we'll come to the tree board, uh, next month at the next regular schedule, meaning to get that proclamation, uh, recommended by the tree board. So we can take it to council. Um, and then also, uh, come up with a possible plan for, for their, what we're going to do on the Arbor Day celebration.
So I guess we'll move right along into our work session.
Before we get into that, can I, uh, make just one small announcement? Cricket, if you don't mind, I just wanted to let you know that on January the eighteenth, your daughter and I were in cahoots and, uh, she already told you about it?
Well, she had to because I'm working on them. And I said, I felt like I needed to finish my project before you did that.
So we, uh, the city nominated in, along with Becky's efforts, uh, nominated Cricket for a, uh, the twenty twenty-four Sally Donovan Award for her work at the historic cemeteries.
Cool.
She was, uh, nomination was successful. And so, uh, good work to you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We couldn't possibly do everything that we do at that cemetery without you. Not only as a parks asset, but also from a tree board, um, uh, side of things as well. You do tremendous work, uh, on behalf of the city and for the city, as well as with your work with the children at Marshville High School and you're just a great advocate, uh, for that piece of property and, uh, and the city as a whole.
I appreciate it, but, but I am sort of working with Chelsea, you know, so she said, I'm not going to tell you this.
You are. Well, thank you very much. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
All right. And we'll talk a bit more about it, but, um, I'm, I'm, I'm super excited that we got an opportunity to, Becky is just, I think I told you before, Becky's an amazing person. Um, she's, she did a lot of heavy lifting.
She always does.
But, uh, she was, you know, she was amazing in the process. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, for, uh, for all your work and, and, uh, I'll talk to Becky once again and let her know that first, I'm, I'm not going to rob any banks with her. Yeah, keep secrets. Well, thank you. Yeah, if you'd like to hang out or enjoy some more pizza.
Okay, moving along.
So, um, yeah, so the, uh, purpose of this work session is to review and update and approve tree list for, for the municipal code, chapter eight point three, uh, tree and tree boards. At the January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, uh, tree board meeting, the board made a motion and the motion was carried to have a work session to discuss the approved tree list. The City of Kusbay Tree Board was created with the purpose to promote, protect the public health, safety and welfare and the residents of the City of Kusbay by providing, providing for the regulations for the planting, maintenance and removal of trees and shrubs within the city. As part of the responsibilities of the tree board is to review the complete and to review completed the plan and provisions of this chapter at least once every three year period. It appears that this list was revisited in two thousand and fifteen. However, it was never, uh, approved by the city council. So the goal of this, this, uh, meeting is, uh, staff is requesting that tree board develop a final approved tree list to be presented at the next regular tree board meeting in March. So that is the goal of this meeting is to, and maybe subsequent, may, maybe other work sessions may be required, uh, in the future. But if at the next tree board meeting, we can't compile a list. And this list of trees is the guide staff through the process of approving permits, of approving, uh, new development of, of, of these type of, of functions that we have to do at a staff level without having to come to the tree board every quarter, uh, to, to present, um, different kinds of trees to be planted. So we, this list is necessary for us to do our jobs. And so that's the responsibility of this board is to create that list of trees that when a development is, is suggested, we can look at this approved tree list and say, these trees are on the list. It can be planted. These trees are not on the list. They cannot be planted unless you want to go through that section process, which may take some time. So with that, I'll turn it over to the tree board to start that discussion.
Yeah, Rex already said he had some items that he wanted.
Do you guys got any ideas? And what about these guys, the people that don't show up? This is crazy. Anyway.
Yeah, I do. I got a lot to say, probably too much. But first of all, we got a handout.
Okay. Excuse me. Um, everybody gets one of these. And let's start at the beginning. And, and again, guys, there's eight people on the board and I'm one person. These are just my ideas. They are subject to change and subject to alteration, but I would like to, well, two things I'd like to do here today. One is come up with a list, but second is to review the tree board and what it does. Every time here as we have to review it. And today would be a good day to do that.
Yeah, I got.
Today would be a good day to review the.
Entire tree board thing. It won't take long. We'll read through it. We'll blast through this thing. And because there's, I don't want to change the tree, the, the tree board, but I like to add because it's just not sufficient. Yes, Jen?
So, so, um, do we need to establish what we want as a group, some goals for this work session? Because we were under the impression it was to create a tree board list and, and, um, if, if you want to, if you want to expand on that, should we decide that as a group? It is your guys' work session and I'm, I'm just putting that out there.
I'm prepared for the front prices. So you and I have had some conversations.
So, and it's more, it's more really a review, a review of what, what, what the initial tree board, because now, see this thing was put together in ninety-two and then it was kind of re-upped a little bit in ninety-five, but there's been a lot of changes since then. Um, so I think we really need to, we need to redo the whole thing. And if we're actually going to have two hours to do this, we'll have plenty of time. It won't, it won't take long. Um, and, and, and there's, well, yeah.
So, just, uh,
And I've read.
So goal.
Good, let me add you.
So goal A is to develop a tree list. Goal B is to review the, uh, chapter eight point three? Or is that going to be combined into one goal?
It's going to be combined. In front of you, um, Greg, there is a tree list, but we need to, we need to go over a few things before we get to that tree list. Let's, let's start at the beginning and, um, let's look at this as a point of, of me, the contractor or anybody else that comes to the City of Kusbay and says, oh, you're putting a new street, we need straight trees. Or somebody is building a house and says, okay, I've got a sidewalk out in front of my house. I'd like to do something in the right way. So there needs to be some definition there. And here again, we get back to the, we get back to this, um, uh, section one, section two, section three. Now they don't call that out and I know the ordinance doesn't have pictures, so we can't use those, but the ideas are there. And I think it's important to get those ideas in the, in the ordinance. So let me, let me just start. I'm finding my glasses.
Right.
Oh, there we go. Thanks, Cora. Okay. Um, is everybody on approved tree list nineteen ninety-five?
Yes.
Okay. These are the trees that currently, my understanding, if somebody wants to come in and they have a design, that these are the trees we have to use. This is like trying to make a salad and all you've got is carrots or maybe carrots and lettuce. It's not a complete list. It leaves a lot of things out. So I would like to, to, well, I'd like to add to this list. So let's go, let's tell you how, in course, you said you couldn't find this and I couldn't link it.
Maybe I did and there were parts of it that I didn't, that I couldn't find.
I looked under development code at seven, seventeen hundred something and there wasn't anything there. So then I dug around to the eighteen hundreds and I come up with this, the eighteen, eighteen dot fifteen dot zero.
I did find it.
Landscaping within the right of way. Then if you go down to bullet number three, street tree installation and types. Street tree installation and types shall be in conformance with chapter eight point three O, the Kusbay Municipal Code. So then I dug down and found eight point three O. And I gotta say, I looked at this in ninety-two, but I don't think I've looked at it since. And it's a really good point that Craig made. We should look at this every three years. Um, there's a lot of information in here that, that, that we probably, probably need to, need to go over. Um, so I'm going to go over it real quick, but, uh, and, uh, anyway, and, and point out where I think we need to make exceptions to the rule. So, um, purpose, okay, the purpose of chapters to promote and protect public health. Good. That's what you had stated, Greg, and that's good. Definitions for the purposes of this chapter, upon definitions by park trees means shrubs, bushes and all other woody vegetation in public parks and all other areas owned by the city open to the public. Okay. And that to me is saying section three and, and we'll come out this what, how we get section three later. But okay, that's an area that we, was a very gray area of what we can plant in the parks. Um, uh, and, and in the parks and even more so the, the, uh, unvacated alleys. A public right of way means streets and alleys included that, including that portion of the dedicated right of way, which is not currently used as a street or alley. This would be section two and three. These are the areas that, um, these are the areas that are not the corridor. All right. Go to the next page here. Street trees means, uh, trees, shrubs, bushes and all other woody vegetation on land located within or adjacent to public right of ways within the city. Good. Jump to tree board. Composition and procedures. The tree board shall be appointed by the city council and shall consist of, of, up to eight members. They, we've got three. Um, one member of the tree board from the city council, Carmen. Uh, one member of the tree board from the parks commission.
You have four, I believe. I said Patrick signed in.
Patrick signed in? Okay. Patrick, you there?
I, I'm here.
Okay, welcome aboard. You missed pizza. I wish you was here, but listen in. We're going.
Yeah, me too. But yeah, still stuck in the office.
Okay, we're, uh, going over the tree board ordinance. Um, so we're all clear on, on what the tree board's all about and some recommendations of what we might add to the existing ordinance. Okay, uh, one member for the tree board shall be a parks commissioner. Do we have anybody from parks?
Carmen.
Carmen.
Carmen is both. Okay, okay. At least one member of the tree board shall be a representative from the field of, of arboriculture, um, landscape architect or otherwise have a background and professional knowledge of trees and their care. I could jump into that role, I suppose. Um, one member of the tree board shall be designated by the, uh, board, uh, of the downtown association.
We don't have any members.
That is still vacant.
Okay. Okay. The balance of the trees of board shall be citizens with an interest in trees. Everybody should have an interest in trees, but okay. Um, all members shall be city residents, members residing outside the city, but who own property within the city shall be considered to have such residential status. The council may allow membership for one non-resident who possesses subject matter expertise needed by the board. Okay, I'm, I'm kind of interested in that. In that position. There's, there's, there's a couple of people that know a lot more about trees than I do. Um, uh, but unfortunately they don't live within the city limits. Um, so anyway, that's, that's a question mark for me, but, uh, that's what it says. Uh, the members shall be appointed for a term of four years. Vacancy except at the expiration of a term shall be filled by a temporary appointment made by the council for the remainder of the unexpired term. Uh, committee members may not re, may be reappointed for additional terms of four years each. If we can't find, uh, uh, somebody for the, well, uh, downtown, the downtown association. A- anyway, we, we need eight people. We need eight people on this.
So the downtown association executive director, they're going through, uh, staff changes.
Yeah.
So I believe they recently got a new executive director. So it's on our to-do list. It's just that that person has just started or is in the, in the transition. So we had Holly Wardman and we actually had appointed her and then she resigned. So we're just going through some staff transition.
Okay, okay. Well, let's, let's try to, try to get somebody in, in that.
Sure. We just have to wait for her to physically be here.
Okay. Um, a member of the tree board may resign at any time by submitting a letter of resignation. Hey, that's easy. The tree board members by majority vote shall elect a chairperson or vice chairperson. We did that last time. Well, good there. Regular meetings shall be held at frequency necessary to carry out the tree board duties. Um, and whatever we've got going there is okay. Uh, we don't have a lot of, lot of tree requests, but, but anyway, we need to have some frequency. Uh, four members of the tree board shall consist of a quorum by conducting any business. So actually we've got four today. Jennifer says we're not really voting on anything, but, um,
But I think that I can interject here. I think if we were, if we were to establish a list and somebody comes back and says, we didn't have, um, you know, we didn't have the authority to be able to make those, that, that list decision. We have four, we have four members here today.
So the actually requested is staff was requesting the tree board develop a final approved list to be presented to the board at the next board voting.
Right.
So no action is requested today.
Right. But, but if we were to develop a list and it was to go to the final thing, someone that is not here could say, well, you don't, you didn't have the authority to be able to develop that list.
Uh, no, this, this meeting is to develop the list for presentation. Now at the next, if, if a list cannot be developed here, we go to the next tree board meeting, that'll be a topic of conversation again to create a list. At the next tree board meeting, if, if this body here today makes a suggestion that these are the trees we want on the final approved tree list, we'll take that for, for vote. If this group can't develop that list, then, uh, it'll be at the next report meeting, the question that that list be developed. So this is a work session. This is the, uh, only a suggested list. It's not, yes.
We never noticed that an action was going to be taken. Therefore, we can't do an action.
Right. But at the end of the day, at the end, at the end of the hour, I would like to see us agree on a list.
Yeah.
To be presented to the tree board.
Now, if that list cannot be, then we can, like I said, take it to the next meeting or we can schedule another work session, uh, to continue that conversation.
Between now and the next regular schedule, we.
We're playing this since fifteen ninety-two.
Yeah, it's been a long time. Yeah, we need to get it done.
Uh, yeah. So anyway, okay. Well, very good, Greg.
We know, Greg, that you're not going to be a part of all this, but Rex and I have been, Rex has been on the board a couple of years longer than I have and we need to get it done. I mean.
Yes, I'm, I'm not.
No, absolutely. And, and I'm, I'm, I'm really excited that we're doing this. And yeah, and maybe in the past we haven't done it, but I'm glad that we're doing it now. So I'm, I'm, I'm super excited about that. I think that we're definitely moving in the right direction.
Okay. Okay. Um, oh, I have an answer by this one. The tree board shall make and alter rules and regulations for its operation consistent with the city charter ordinance and, and resolutions, subject to review by the, by the council. Now that is what I would like to look at today. I would not only like the approved list to become, to go before the, the city council, I would like a few recommendations put in that as well. And again, it's not changing the ordinance, it's simply adding to it.
So once again, that would have to go to the next regular tree board.
Yep.
Meeting. Any suggestions? Just so we know, we could include in a staff report that we can present to the tree board. Now, once, once that action is requested, you guys make a motion and this body approves that motion, we'll then take it to the public works director for consideration to take to council.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, yeah. Um, all right. So anyway, uh, make rules and regulations. Okay, we're not, we're not changing anything, but we're just adding to it. Uh, number eight, members of the tree board shall receive no compensation. Yep, except free pizza if it belongs to them. Um, tree board duties. And the tree board shall have the primary responsibility to study, investigate, develop and to update periodically a written plan for the care, preservation, pruning, planting, replanting, removal and, uh, disposition of all trees and park trees. That's kind of what I alluded, alluded to in this, in this, my little color thing, um, from the last, from the last meeting. So very important here. As a part of the plan, a list of acceptable species shall be developed and maintained for planting as street trees. The species will be divided into three size classes, small, medium and large. Now, I do not think that is the best way to do it. I think we should change that small, medium, large to corridor, which is, which is section one. We won't say section one, but corridor, which is the main corridors, residential, commercial, which is the, the secondary part of this. And then third is alleys and parks. I think that needs to, I think that's where we should be headed with this. A list of tree species not suitable for planting will also be developed. Okay, now both of those are in this packet today. Let's read through the rest of this and then let's go back and look at trees. Um, the plan developed by the tree board shall be, uh, presented to the city council and upon council acceptance or approval, the plan shall constitute the official comprehensive tree plan for the city. Now, I have a bit of a question with that. I don't know how you can plan for trees, um, when you don't know when the streets are going to be new streets and new sidewalks put in. I can, I can tell you this, uh, well, Meredith did an inventory, so we have the inventory, but there's already kind of a plan in place. If you'll notice, second street is all oaks, everything on second street. Fourth street is all maples. Um, uh, market, Anderson, commercial, all maples. Uh, that little stretch down there by ripes, mangolias. Um, what am I missing? Um, anyway, we've already got something in place. I, it, it, it's not by plan. It was just by accident really, but we could continue that. But I don't know that we, I don't know that we can come up and say, okay, a business is moving in on second street and you have to plant an oak. Um, well, for instance, I'm in the urban renewal area. I want to tear out my sidewalk. I like a tree well there and I would like to put an oak tree in it. Um, so I, I guess it's going to be tough to come up with a plan. We can come up with the suggestions for a tree, for trees to use, but a plan, I, I, I don't know how you do that. So anyway, let, let's think on that. Um, the plan developed by the tree board shall be presented to city council. Okay, acceptance, plan shall, yeah, um, shall be the official comprehensive tree plan for the city. The plan and the provisions of this chapter will be reviewed completely at least once every three years. That's what we're doing today. Um, after the initial approval. Well, okay. Anyway, we, we need to do that. We need, every three years, we need to read this thing out loud and we need to look at, at, at where, where we are with it. And, and all the members should be included in that. Uh, the tree board may also develop criteria for germining standards and protecting heritage trees. Okay. Permits, a permit, uh, shall obtained by public works director for planting or pruning or otherwise. Okay. Um, any street tree planted subsequent, oh, this is a good one. We need, we need your order here for this. Any street tree, any street tree planted subsequent to adoption of the ordinance codified in this chapter and not in compliance with, therewith, shall be removed at the expense of the person. And not in compliance with, therewith, shall be removed at the expense of the person who planted it. Now, maybe I'm just dumb, but I don't understand any of that. Anyway, we'll leave it in there. It's a, uh. It's a lot of big googly goo words that, that to me doesn't need a lot. Okay, flipping the page. Now, planting, maintenance, and removal. And, and since there isn't a, since there's only one through eight on this, I guess. The only thing we can do is what seems to be done upon other, other documents. You have to stick something in the middle. You got a sandwich or in there. So, eight point three oh, point seven oh, I would like point five before one. Um, street trees should be the same variety for block or blocks, contiguous planting wherever possible. And the reason for that is, is back to this. Let's not do a salt and pepper thing. When, when you've got a major, and this is primarily for the border plantings. If you've got a corridor planting of a certain type of trees, let's keep it that way. Till the street turns or until you come to the end of the block. Let's, let's have the continuity all the way down the street. Let's not, um, throw something out in the middle of there. Yes, Jennifer.
What if they're the wrong tree? And what if, what if we have a group of trees that, you know, maybe twenty years ago were planted and it was thought to be the right thing, but now we would never propose that type of planning today? We would just be perpetuating that. I think it comes back to that. We need that formal plan. E- even if it's gonna take twenty years to implement. Um.
Wait till the tree dies and replace it with the right one. I'm not, I'm not saying tearing out any trees, but I, but when, when the tree die, I mean. Way back in the Steve Dode era, he was head of this, um, second, Greg's chair. And he said, um, I like the idea of flowering trees in every corner. So all the way down commercial, he put flowering plums, flowering cherries. Um, okay, on the corners. That made sense to him at the time. The problem with that is if you look at those plums, they're all broken up now. They're, they're, they're twenty, 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 thirty-year-old tree. When you do corridor plantings, it's gonna be there for long after we're dead and gone. You need to have trees that will, are long-lived.
But that's to my point. What if there is these flowering plum trees? And for your point five section, if I'm reading this correctly. Because there's a flowering plum, now I can plant another one if I wanna come in and plant a new tree because street trees should be the same variety. For that block.
But, but what I think what Rex is saying is with, with the, the, the cherries and the plums that have been planted at the ends of the block. If you've got other trees that are, that are planted within that block that are the same. And you've got these outliers, I'm gonna say, on the ends of the block. When those outliers die. Are you, we, we're not gonna replace them with those, with the same variety that was there. We're gonna replace it to match the rest of the block.
I, I know, but what if the ones inside are still the wrong trees that we wouldn't plant today? That's all I'm getting at. And that's where I'm coming back to the fact that there should be an overall plan rather than just matching what's right next door. Um, it's just my comment. You guys are the, you guys are the decision makers.
Well, the corridor trees are a special, they're, they're a special entity in themselves. And like Boris said, leave it there, fine. A couple of those are starting to fall down now. Don't replace them with a plum. Replace them with a maple. That's what we've got going on that street.
How, how wide are those maple?
Well, the Arm, Armstrongs are gonna stay probably about twenty foot. Um, case in point, the ones that were planted there before, the October glories, they will go out to thirty feet. Um.
See, and, and most of the sidewalks down there are eight feet. So you're automatically either putting them, you know, to where they're growing into buildings or they're growing. Uh, well over buildings to cause maintenance issues. I mean, you yourself said that there's an answer for everything, which I, I kinda, I don't understand that. Cause there's tons of trees, uh, and, and I, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I would know them all. But I think, I think if we, if we develop this with that sort of thing in mind, as, as well as beauty. We're gonna be adding to this community. If we don't consider those things, we're. You know, we're just causing problems for it. I mean, we, we should just go buy a, a flat piece of land and. Find a whole bunch of trees out there and call it good. Um, you know, uh, like the downtown, an awful lot of this has to do with. The urban renewal districts, the one in Empire, I assume, and this one. And, uh. You know, uh, at, uh, my, my feeling is. We can, we can accomplish what you're trying to accomplish, but at the same time. Uh, uh, accentuate, uh, the downtown area. Beautify the downtown area and make it easier that, because. Most of those trees wouldn't be funded if it wasn't for the downtown area. So I mean, I think there needs to be sort of a synergy, uh, developed with, with both of these things in line. And my, my thought is, have you ever had a, a landscape architect? You know, submitted, I mean, you go to some cities and you can tell the whole darn city was. You know, had a landscape architect involved. Um, those, and they kind of. They, I, I assume their territory is the, the beauty of, of it all. And I, I think we go through an awful lot of effort to, if, uh, and to leave that part out is. It, it just doesn't seem to make sense for me. I, I, you know, I know I'm new to this, but I, but I've had a business downtown for twenty years. Still own a business downtown and, you know, uh. For, to not consider the businesses, it, it's, it seems to be shooting ourselves in the foot. I mean, not only for these businesses, but the community as a whole, because this is a, it's a small economic engine for the entire community. So I, I think that plays a role here. It can't be just. Plant life. It just can't, you know, that's wonderful, but it can't be just that when you're right in the middle of a city. Um, you need to consider a whole lot.
Well, okay, could we do this? We could come up with a plan and we could state what the trees should be. On that, and when then the old ones are torn out, we could replace them. You could replace them with, with the correct tree. I mean, that, that would be a very easy thing to do, especially in the corridor section.
Sure, but, but also, you know, with trees that will be, uh, that, that will conform to. Certain width and height requirements as well. That, you know, and, and that will, that will, um. Help the downtown. You, I, you certainly, I mean, I'm sure we can add beauty to the downtown. We can add trees to the downtown and, you know, I, I planted a lot of trees in Chuz Bay. I like trees, but at the same time, um, you know, in, in a, an urban area. Uh, there's a lot more to consider than just the independent beauty of a tree. Is my, is my feeling. I mean.
So, now Mark, Mark, um, see where, so I can see where you're at. You give, give me an example of, of what.
Well, one example is the, the plum trees in the parking lot. That's pretty, uh, that's pretty exciting for downtown. Cause most of it seems to be tall, green trees. And, uh. You know, the, the only, the objection I have to that is it seems to be too many plum trees. In that parking lot. I think a, a landscape architect could give it a little variety. Hell, nature provides us with a huge color palette and huge variety of, of types of trees. And, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm not an artist or, or a, or an architect. But, uh, I think there are people who, who could make us suggestions that way. Um, I, I certainly, I certainly have seen that. Uh, I've certainly been in, been in cities and neighborhoods that have had that sort of treatment. It's nice. I mean, they're the only thing I, you know, worry about is it gets, there, there becomes too much conformity. Um, but we have a lot of conformity as things start, start standing right now. Um. You know, uh, it, it seems as though the trees on fourth street are designed to, to show these giant trees. But they're, like you say, they're corridors in our town. And that some of the major businesses are along those corridors and they block them. They, they make them so it's. It's hard to see what's in there. And, and, and those major corridors, they're being seen at a driving pace. The smaller streets, a lot of those are seen at walking pace. But, you know, so it just seems, it seems as though we need to give that some consideration. Or do this. I real, I longevity, there's, there's, there's tons of things, I go with this, but, but I don't, I don't wanna forget. That there are, are small businesses that without them existing. You know, what would Chuz Bay really be?
Well, yeah, and I, and I understand that point. Uh, I'd like to give two examples, though, of where the tree board caved in. And made a mistake, in my opinion. Um, uh, the first is down there at the, um. I call it the sandwich shop, the hurdy-bang, but it's no longer that. It's. Well, no, it's wind brim.
Wind, yeah, down the corner of.
Yeah.
Commercial and.
We said, we're doing the sidewalk there. We're gonna put in maples. We're gonna put in Armstrong maples. There're gonna be a trunk and they're gonna get up above where you, where you just simply see a, see a. A trunk. And he said, oh, no, 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 I don't, I don't wanna tree. Well, it's, yeah, it's a big tree, but it's up over roofline. If you look at all the Armstrongs down there now, they're up over. That you just see the trunk. So he said, oh, yeah, I want, you know, I want a small tree. So we put in Styrax there. Um, it's a huge mistake. It blocked, they never, they never get more than fifteen feet. It blocked the view. Yours are really nice, cause you pruned them up, but he did, that was never pruned up. And so they blocked that. Had we put in three, or actually. He has three trees there. It, it was, if we did maples, it would have just been one. One would make a lot more sense than those three Styrax. Uh, because now you get out of your car and you bump the tree, or if you had a maple there, you would only have one to bump in the door, not three of them. Um, and, and they've done quarterly. Uh, it would have been better off to just, and that's what we wanted to do, put one maple. The other one was on one-on-one, Marshfield Bargain House. They said, oh, oh, no, you're not, you're not putting trees here. We want, we want a shrub. Well, so we put in a couple of shrubs. It, so you, you know, zip, 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 vacant. Then zip, zip, zip again. If, if the continuity wasn't there. And, and, you know, if I can go back in time as a tree board member, I'd say, we're holding our ground. Let's, let's, let's make this thing continuous. Let's make this thing look the same. And, um, uh, the, the whole idea of the, the corridor plantings especially, are to get those trees up to where all you see is a trunk. Uh, let's top, do whatever it's gonna do. Get that thing seven feet on the sidewalks, fourteen feet on the street side. Get it up there as fast as you can. So it's just simply a trunk that you go past. But yet, when you turn the corner, you've got the vision all the way down of a nice framed street. That. I don't know. I go.
So you think. Listening to you, you talk, is it more of a, a development of a master plan? Uh, versus a, a comprehensive, is it time, is it time to, to create a master plan for our, uh. Downtown corridor and, uh, our.
We already did that, but we, that was when Randy was here.
So it's a master plan.
Well, well, he had it. It was, we saw it. It's just, we don't know where it went.
Done searches.
Can't find it.
So, so do you remember like the approximate time? It was in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen.
Cause it had to do, it also had to do, we did the urban forestry plan at the same time.
Yeah. We found, um, I, I did searches for urban forestry and I found templates. But nothing specific to the city. I found examples of what other cities have.
Yeah.
Nothing specific.
No, we actually had.
I didn't remember.
We had paper, we had, we had.
Yeah.
You guys will, you guys, and I'm sorry, I, I get what I'm asking, I should not be asking. But do you guys have? Documentation or any.
We never got anything.
Yeah.
Yes, we could do, I, I mean, we've searched, uh, but I, I haven't been able to find one. Um, and it doesn't mean that we did, if, if the body wants it, we can't do it again. But I, I just, I, I, we haven't been able to locate one. Um, and maybe, maybe we're not searching for the right keywords, whatever the situation might be. But we've, we've looked, uh, in everything that we can think to look into. Um, but unsuccessful, inviting a, Jennifer alluded to, we found templates. This is what other cities are doing, but we've never found one specific for Chuz Bay that was developed and. And even it was, 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 it was, we can't find anything that anything was ever done with, other than a idea.
Let me go back to my. Found anything that, that said.
Randy Dixon was our, was my predecessor. He was operations administrator for.
Yeah.
The city for a few years.
Uh-huh.
Can you what?
Hunt him down?
Oh, I know where he is.
Yeah, I'll get him. Listen, listen, listen to the radio.
Really?
Okay. I didn't say that. Um, anyway, it would be, it's not rocket science to come up with a plan. We've already pretty much got a plan in place. If we just continue with what we've, um, on the corridor streets, if we continue with what's already there. Um, and when, when those trees die, replace them, which with, like I say, second street's oaks. Most of the other streets are maple. Um. Those magnolias down there in front of Ripes, that, that court, whatever it is, those are all, those are all in place. And so it would not be difficult to, to simply just create or just continue that.
But I'm finding, I'm thinking that Greg is asking us is to develop a plan for that progression.
Yeah, I think, I think what we're doing, what staff, at a staff level, when we're developing projects or when we're approving, somebody brings in, I wanna do this project. So A, B, and C, whatever the situation may be, that we have some guidance that we can provide to that citizen or the developer. Or for our projects. Um, that's, that's what we need at a staff level.
And it's consistent with your vision.
And, yeah, and, and matches what this board wants to do.
Okay, okay. That's something we could work on.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think that's an easy fix.
Yeah.
I really do. Uh, let's rip through the rest of this, then it'll get to trees. Uh, protection trees, yeah. Um, okay. It shall be lawful for any person to remove, destroy, break, or injure any street tree or park tree. One point five. All city trees planted. Uh, with the exception of sidewalks, shall have a protective trunk covered. Weed eaters and mowing damage. And that's gets back to this thing, this poor tree that was. The ones up here at Marshfield High School that are all destroyed because somebody had to get so close to the weed eater. If they're in grass. They, they need to be, they need to be protected. You know, the only way, you know, on sidewalks is different because that, that's all bark much. But, and it still wouldn't hurt. It still wouldn't hurt to put a protector, but they need some protection on them. I would like to see that, that added into that as a one point five. Um. Okay, during construction, repair, alteration, remove any, okay, yeah, that's no big deal. Excavation, that's no big deal. All building materials and debris should be kept at least four feet away. Okay. And then finally appeals. If anybody wanted to appeal this, they can take it before the city council. So, that being said, let's turn to the next page. And now for the next three pages, these are all the trees. Uh, Sunset Western Garden Book, which is the bible of the area, um, that are, that I think would be. Compatible. Now, this is, out, out of this list, out of these three pages. I picked trees for section one, trees for section two, which includes a lot of trees for section one, and then separate cheap trees for section three. So, um, if you guys have any problem with these trees, let me just go through them briefly, briefly. Cause there's, there's just a, there's a ton of, there's a ton of stuff. And, and that's why I'm saying. Back to our salad here with the carrots and lettuce. We don't, we don't have, we don't have enough, uh, we don't have enough flexibility. We need a bigger list that, and these are all, these are just trees that grow well here. But then we need a list of what could, could happen in section one, section two, and section three. And. There again, um, last meeting, Mark mentioned that, that a palm tree might be good. Well, that is, in my opinion, is the worst thing ever to plant anywhere. However, if you had a surf, surfboard shop or you had a suntan parlor. It may not be out of the realm.
I didn't mention that I would like them. I think there are a couple palm tree like things planted, the old Michael Jordan.
Yeah, well, yeah, I guess my point to that was, there's. Yeah, well, yeah, I guess my point to that was, there's exceptions to everything, um, uh, corridor plantings. I wouldn't, not so much.
I wouldn't go for them. I, the the two I removed when I got here, the first house I owned. I had to have dug out with a backhoe and my, the ground there has been sinking for twenty-five years. As what was left in, uh, I guess rotted or did some codes. But but those moved the whole sections of of side off in front of the house.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there are certain trees that aren't a good idea.
Well, okay, on, on trees to be considered, the acers, the maples, um, lots of different ones now, but these are the, the. And and everything here is is long-lived. There, uh, we're looking at corridor trees, we're looking at fifty to a hundred year trees, um, section two, not so much. Uh, people don't, houses don't last that long, people don't live that long, um, and and they're smaller areas, but these are big trees. So there's a lot of different maples, um, and the red maples are probably your best bet, and that's what we've used. Uh, and there's lots of, lots of different variety there. Um, I like the Armstrong just because they're more upright and they're columnar. But there's the maples, um, then there's, uh, uh, the horse chestnut. Now, City and North Bend just planted a bunch of horse chest- chestnut. On Virginia, I don't think it probably was a wise idea.
I don't think so either.
Cause this thing gets, they get huge. I've got one of my places.
Huge canopy.
Four, yeah, forty-five feet across. So I don't know that that was a wise choice, but there may be a spot for that. There may be, um, uh, so anyway, it should be on the list, because there may be a, maybe the palm tree in front of the surfboard shop. It, the, anyway, um, not, not, and we'll find out if we're gonna use that. Uh, the carpinas, uh, hornbeam, really missed the boat on hornbeams, that's something that we really should consider. There was three of the nicest hornbeams ever behind Jenny's shoes, and one of the future mayor said they were butt ugly and had them cut down. And it was just a mistake, it was a huge mistake. Um, uh, so I, uh, a- anyway. Hornbeams are good, uh, Cedrus, again, that'd be number three, that's an evergreen, um, but there's some really nice, um, uh. Uh, uh, blue atlas cedars, uh, cirrhosis canadensis, red bud, not a real big tree, kind of a medium tree, um, nice tree. We don't have any in Kus Bay that I know of.
They don't grow very well here.
You know, I've had trouble with them too, so, yeah, so maybe that's not one that, well. They're, they're, well, okay, then, um, well, when we get to the list, it comes up on them, we'll cross it out. Uh, cornice, dogwoods, they're a small tree, they're not a, uh, they're not, but but they're, they're a tree that that will grow here. Somebody wanted to put a dogwood in front of their house, a pink or white, um, yeah. Uh, percaetus, the hawthorns, good trees, lavalier, we had some beautiful lavalier, I planted some beautiful ones down from Dr. Asper's office. The old, uh, the paint store had burned down, and they were removed, just up and cut off to the ground, and I don't know why, they were beautiful trees. Um. Uh, uh, capressis, of course, that's your Leyland, that's an evergreen. Um, and, uh, fagus sivatica, that's your beeches, not crazy about beeches, because they get aphids real bad, aphids and white fly. Uh, sorbus occuparia, there again, on Hall Street, there's sorbus occuparia on Hall Street, the mountain ash. Um, uh, fraxinus ash, well, there's a, there's a couple that are okay, not a big fan of ash. Uh, ginkgo biloba, uh, one of the nicest ones ever, just on the, on the sharp corner by Casey's, the old Casey salary. Uh, there's another one in the library, um, very unusual tree, very unusual tree, I planted one in the library. And it had beautiful fall color. Uh, gladiatia trachanthos, um, maybe, it grows well here, let's put it that way. Um, uh, larks, uh, that's, um, just another evergreen, uh, tea tree. And that's got a lot of flower to it, that's a pretty, pretty tree. Uh, and linens, yeah, the linens are are a good tree, the green spiders are especially nice, there's a lot of those planted in Salem. Liquid ambier, the sweet gum, uh, US Postal Service here, that's what's all in front of that is, and they have beautiful fall color. People think they're maple, but they're not, they're, they're liquid ambier. Um, anyway, uh, that's a, a nice tree, magnolia grandiflora and the salangiana. Now, the salangiana are in front of Rives, um, it's not on the city, the, uh, the grandiflora are not on city property. But they're at US Bank, um, um, next to the, uh, the. So, well, it's a city hall there, fireman, fireman dedication thing, they're right next to that. Uh, malice, which is the apples, uh, these are all, uh, these are all crab apples. Um, which are really, it's a small, smaller tree, uh, and then also, I don't think you should, should rule out the, uh. Um, the, uh, the fruiting apple, um, uh, that. You can use. Anyway, uh, medusquae, the dawn redwood, uh, Pisces, there are always spruces, there's some nice spruces. The pines, they're short-lived, unless you're stocking about a pine rose, but again, that's in an area number three. That's back where hiding the neighbors.
So I'd like to, uh, Rex, real quick, uh, Haley has joined.
Oh, good.
Arizona joined. Can you hear us, Haley?
Yes, I can, and I'm on my way over from another meeting, but I'm gonna listen in until I get there.
Wonderful. We'll see you when you get here.
Uh, platinus, a lot of them used up in the valley, Eugene's got a lot of salamence lane trees.
Yeah, they're beautiful.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a good tree, it's a good tree, disease resistant, it's a good tree. Um, plums, uh, you've got the fruiting, and then you've also got the flowering, um, and there again. Uh, why, why would you use it? It's a special, in a special case, when they did the natural food, uh, natural food grower, uh, grocery down here. Um, they had some sort of a flowering tree, and I, when I come through planting, I said, hey. You're a food store, why wouldn't you put a fruit tree there? What, you still get the bloom, you still get a flowering tree. So they did, so there are two or three plums there, and I think there's a, I think there's an apple there too, um, good choice, um, that makes sense. That, there's an easy for them.
Had one of those in my backyard when it's grown up, seemed like plums, they all fell out of the tree within one week, and it was a gigantic mess.
Yes.
Is that what plums are about?
Well, they they can be, they can be, um, yeah, the the brooks especially.
I'd never plant a plum.
Yeah, well, yeah.
I was the one that hadn't played it, really.
Uh, populus, uh, the cottonwoods, uh, tremolies, you only want, you want, you want the asthma, don't, the other ones, uh, huge mistake. They used, uh, uh, they used the, uh, oh, the most common poplar, um. What, what's it?
I can't remember the name of it, the, the, the common one is terrible.
Yeah, yeah, they used it on Moss Street, Eugene, it's, you know, next to the university, and they paid thousands of dollars. In windshield replacement and car damage, because they got to be about forty years old, and then it's coming on, yeah.
Come up and crash.
Yeah, so, um.
Basically, they, they just kind of fall apart.
Yeah, Lombardi.
Yeah, Lombardi, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's one you don't want. Uh, prunus flowering cherries, a lot of flowering cherries. Great, you know, now down there in that parking lot, behind the old Penny's building, that's a great place for a plumber cherry, that makes sense, you know, um. On a corner street, no, no. Uh, then the list goes on here, more cherries, and then we get into the, uh, the pirates, the pears, um, uh. One-on-one, uh, down there by West Western and shark bites, those are shanticleers, uh, flowering pear, they're very nice, very nice trees. They make a nice tree, tree, uh, if I were to, to plant a tree in that area, that's probably the tree I would plant, because they're already there. Again, that's no tall pepper, let's try to keep it the same. Um, purposey oaks, uh, lots of nice oaks, oaks are slower growing, but they, now that's a, you know, oaks are a two-hundred-year tree. That's the sort of thing that you plant in an area that you want to be there for a long, want to be there for a long, long time. So, um, yeah, the oaks, um, right. Um, welcome.
Thank you.
The, uh, sipoyas, uh, which are other redwoods, the two different types of redwoods. Um, and, uh, typically you'd say, well, definitely not the section one, but if if you had. There again, if you had a, a neighbor that was above you, and you didn't want to look at them, and they didn't want to watch you on your hot tub. Uh, redwoods, probably a good choice, if if it's a, it's an, uh, vacant, an unvacated alley, that nobody's using. Why not? And the city always has the right to cut it down if they ever choose to put the alley in. So, anyway, there's, there's a, every tree has a, has a reason. Uh, the sorbus, the mountain, uh, mountain ash, that's Hall Street. Um, Stewartia, we don't have any Stewartia, these are really nice trees, very nice street trees, but we don't have any in the area. Uh, and the taxes, um, there's a place for for use as an evergreen shrub. Uh, of course, stooges, the arbor by the, and tsuga is all your hemlock family. Um, and then we've got, oh, well, we've got, you know, the murder wood, and also we've got, uh, zelgova, uh, serrata. Now, that is taken over, um, those trees are planted where trees have died of the duchy olm disease. That is the, the, and I've got a bunch of trees in my place framing up my driveway, they're, they're a nice tree, they're a nice tree.
Rex, do you have an extra coffee for Haley? An extra.
Oh, heaven, yes, 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 here. And Haley, get some pizza. Pizza more over there. Okay, now. We're gonna jump to the backside of this, and trees not so suitable for city of Kus Bay streets. This is in, this is one of the two things we're supposed to do here today. This is the list that I came up with. Trees that should not be used within the city right of it, cottonwoods, that's popular, popular, uh, except asthma. Ash, except mountain ash, and then acacia, a lot of acacia over on East Side, it just takes over, it's a big yellow, yellow. Bloom that takes over, um, acacia, silver maple, no, it's, it's the, it's the ratty maple. One was planted in the corner of Tenth Street, and it, um, uh, it was huge, when we did the landscaping across the street. Across two lanes of the street and two, two sidewalks on the other side, we had maples coming up like crazy. They went clear underneath that street, and it just, they go everywhere, and they're trashy, they just drop stuff.
Is that the one that was?
They cut it down now.
That was there in the corner.
Yes, 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 yeah, the rehater's office now. Uh, so silver maple, um, pereilius spinosa, devil's walking bug, no, no, don't have that, that's a weed. Tulip tree, beautiful tree, but extremely brittle, and they get extremely large. Um, alder, now, and we have enough of those, willows, same way, there's no pretty willow. Again, somebody might want a weak in willow, but it doesn't need to be near the street, it needs to be, be back away, because they get huge. And the roots are, looks really devastating. Elderberry, cascarum, eucalyptus, empress tree. Is there anything we can add to that, trees that should not be planted in the city of Kus Bay?
Holly.
Holly, put holly down, yeah, yeah. Yeah, holly, holly could be, yeah.
It's great, it's, it's.
Cricket was just in here, she's been fighting holly in the cemetery for, for ten years.
Holly's been determined an obnoxious weed here in the state, because it's taking over and, and, um. Overgrowing natural habitat that.
Yeah.
That, um, say you've got a big forest, it's, you know, uh, cedars and, and, um, firs and whatnot. And it's, it's just, it seeds so bad, it just takes over.
Well, there, there's two things that I don't like about it, um, uh, cause we got a lot of it on the farm, you cannot pull it. Uh, you, you, you put something on it, and you'll strip all the limbs and all of, all the barb bar from it, and it will not pull. Once it, once it gets over about this high, it's got a root that you will not pull, and it is not susceptible to herbicide. I clean up everything with herbicide, but well, you don't holly, it just does not accept it, so it's a, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's a, it's a good security plant, I, you know, and that's exactly what I use, I have them on my back fence. Which there's an alleyway there, which is like a block from the high school, so. You know, a lot of times we get activity back there, and they don't want to climb that fence, because they don't want to tussle with a holly tree.
So Mark, if somebody come into Jennifer's office and says, I'm, these are the plans for my house, and I want to do something with the street. Then I think that would need to be an exception, bring that before the tree board, and you present your argument like you just did, and I think the tree board should rule, well, yeah. Let him plant hollys there.
Okay, long service and happiness.
Yeah.
Cause they, they do have a place, and I'll have you know, on the east coast, people who move here from the east coast. Holly trees are like treasure, it's like, if you've got a holly tree in your front yard, you are somebody. You know, so it's, it's kind of weird that.
Yeah, well, yeah, a couple of things about holly too, they're, uh, you know, for decorations, uh, and and. Dukel, Dukel Nursery, one of the biggest nurseries in the state, they were a holly plant first, and they sold holly, cutting holly for Christmas decorations. The other thing about it is if you take down a big holly, the wood is worth saving, because it, it is.
It's beautiful.
It is gorgeous, whitest of all woods, and that's what they, they used to make piano keys out of. Because it's also whitest and hardest of all woods. So, so, but anyway, for now, I think, I think we should probably add it.
I agree that should be, I had, or the Corr's point about it being deemed invasive.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, and as long as we've brought up this basis, uh, I was asked to be on the weed board at home. And. I, you know, I didn't know much about it, but the, the guy who was in charge of weed board, how we coached a baseball team together. He just thought, I might want something new, so I went and did it, uh, and, and I got into it. And they start talking about invasive stuff, well. You know, I, they, they talk about, I said, you know, I can buy that at Walmart. And, and, and they talked about another one, I said, I, I can buy that at Buy Mart. I said, what, you know, what's going on here? I mean, you, you want these declared evasive. Invasive, and yet, on the other hand, we're letting them in the state, left and right, all over the place. So it seemed to be a real big conflict. At some point, you know, most of my property is, is residential property. And I'm the kind of guy who goes and buys something that looks nice for my yard. And quite frankly, I don't care if it's invasive, because what's invasive is, is. It's invasive to large business, uh, entities like, like, um. Forest, uh, for, uh, lumber, uh, also, uh, cattle and farms. Well, each and every one of them is a business, and each and every one of them has to solve their own problem. Why, why do I have to solve their problem? As a, as a, I'm a citizen too, they're making a profit off of it. So build your, build your problems into your profit, or into your pricing, and be, be done with it. Or get the state to stop letting these things in the state, it doesn't mean, it doesn't make any sense. It did, so I, I, after three weeks, I quit, because I, it's like, I didn't understand, I didn't understand what we were doing. You know, we can't, we can't make something invasive, and then, you know, uh, you, you put it out the door and bring it in this door.
I, I would, I would imagine that us as a city charter. If the state deems that a, a tree or, or some kind of, something is an invasive species. I don't think we can, as a city, would allow, uh, that invasive species to be planted against the, the declaration. Uh, by the state to say, this particular species is invasive.
What you're talking about is just for street trees.
We don't, we don't regulate.
Yeah, and I will agree that you can find invasive species in the, you know, in the marketplace out here, um, that have already been deemed invasive. By the state, and they're still selling them, um.
Yeah, the, the case in point again here, um, Orby's Nursery, when they were in business, he had a great big, um, butterfly bush behind his, behind his house. Behind his shop, and he would literally just take, take cuttings and stick them in a one gallon can, and he'd blow them out at two ninety-nine. And he would sell thousands of those a year. Now, here's the problem with that, the butterfly bush, when you're doing roadside. I do a lot of roadside spraying in the summertime for all the major timber companies, but when you see a butterfly bush, and it is. Five hundred yards down in the middle of a unit, you've got to say, how did that get there? Well, that the seed was dropped there, and once it takes over east bay, it's terrible with that. Once they start, they will outgrow a fir tree ten to one, and so here, you've, you've got the, the two O tree that you, that the guy's put in, and you've got a butterfly bush. Next to it, that tree doesn't have a chance. Um, uh, butterfly bush is a huge threat to the, to the fourth in the tree, another one is pampas grass. Um, and we always try to get those on the, you get to the top of the landing, and you see a pampas grass, you better get it, because, um. Gorse is a problem, okay, of course, flowers and the seeds drop, because they're fairly big seeds, maybe within twelve or fifteen foot of it. So this thing goes twelve or fifteen foot a year, so you have to, you have to contain that, and you have to try to kill it in that area. Pampas grass, those tiny little blooms, in the wind, they will carry for a mile, yeah. So there again, you've got pampas grass, and, and, um, yew will outgrow a tree, uh, down in, down in, um, um. Hubble County, that is their biggest, biggest concern, their biggest weed. Hubble County, that is their biggest, biggest concern, their biggest weed. And when it's down there spraying, they say, don't, be sure you spray the pampas grass in the middle of the road because next year you won't get over four wheel drive. And they were right. It is hugely invasive, so. And of course we've got Japanese knotweed. We've been fighting that for the watershed for, for years of, and the, the problem with that, Mark, is that, uh, in Coos River, somebody, somebody planted some up there or, or more than likely dumped it out of a truck with an illegal dump. And it got started and it went all the way down the river and the Coos watershed has spent thousands to try to control that. The, uh, the umwah is lost. From Scottsburg down, forget it, they will never control that. It's like Bandon and Gorse, they will never get it, get rid of it. Uh, the, um, one of the forks of Kokil, same way, they will never get rid of it. We were in there and yeah, we, we took out, you know, we took out two and a half miles of it on the river. But if you don't get the head of the serpent, it just keeps coming down. So it's a, invasives are a huge concern. I understand your point though, uh, that if you're planting in your backyard, yeah, the Japanese knotweed is a, is a beautiful, beautiful, um, uh, background. It's a pretty plant.
And I'm now fighting to be able to plant something that's not just in my back, uh, backyard. But I go get my trees at the local whatever store and if it's there, I don't know whether it's invasive, invasive or, or not, but I don't idea, and like most people. Hell, I didn't even know this subject existed until I was asked to get on the weed board, you know, so, uh, here, I'll throw one at you, uh.
Just a quick time check, it's 1:15. And I just, I, I, you guys have whatever conversation you want to have, but we've got a tree board list to get approved and updates.
Real quick, one last little thing, um, I don't know who the property for me, uh, he, he, he took bees around the farms to pollinate them and stuff and he brought his truck back to park it on the lot. He planted a beaver tree, which is apparently from South Korea and it apparently takes over like the forest if you let it. So. And that's just that.
Yeah, I'll keep it contained.
Should I, should I cut it down? I guess probably should.
Uh, no, no, and you can keep it contained.
A million will be, so.
Okay, this one is for, um, we need input from Greg and Jennifer. City trees in section one, uh, should be applied to, um, these street tree plantings pertaining to areas of budding commercial zones. Bayshore, Broadway, Second Street, Fourth Street, Fifth Street, Sixth Street, Eighth Street, just a little piece on that. Elrod Avenue, Donley, Venice Street, Market and Highland. Now those are in your downtown area. Then on top of that, the East Side Corridor, uh, basically state property that was, now is maintained by the city. Empire, Newmark, state property is now maintained by the city. Those, if you wanted a plan, I would say those are the streets that you need the plan for. This is. This is section, this is section one, this is corridor plantings.
Yeah, that's, that was my response to the B. I think if the corridor should be what the Empire and the downtown URA, Urban Renewal Areas are. Uh, so if.
That way it's just defined, so we're not saying market from where to where.
Right, right. It's clearly defined inside those boundaries of the Urban Renewal Areas or Agencies, um, responsibility. So downtown Urban Renewal Area and the Empire Urban Renewal Area as being those quote unquote corridors, main corridors. The reason being is like Jennifer alluded to, what part, where do we stop, where do we draw the line on say Fifth? Where do we draw the line, say on, on Seventh or, uh, Fourth? Where at do we draw? Because it goes south, where it goes all the way down to Lockhart. You know, and X.
Okay, okay.
And we go north, uh, you know, over however far. Uh, same with, uh, you know, those other Second Street, uh, Elrod, all those roads. They, they have continuations, so if we can keep it simply to the Urban Renewal Areas, say those are our clear delineated, uh, markers as to where we start and stop them.
And if you want to add roads like, I don't know, Ocean? I think you could. Um, I just put Ocean out there or like maybe Newmark, because there's a portion, isn't there a portion of Newmark, um, east of, what's the road going into, um, the park?
Hall?
And if you mark east of Hall is not, is not within the URAs.
Okay, so if, if we could get these on a plan, not saying that you're going to do anything, but if for some wild reason you said, now we're going to improve that street, then we would have it on the plan and we could, we would know what trees to put on it.
Yeah, and what we can do is, um, here we go, we can provide. I think you guys, um, should have, uh, the Urban Renewal Area, uh, maps. If not, like, we could, we could definitely email over to you. They're in our GIS exhibits. Uh, they're on our website, um, where they have those, uh, boundaries. But we could definitely get you that information.
Okay, okay, anyway, that, that is kind of your call, where you want this plan to be. Um, uh, and the, the tree board will be happy to make it, tell you what trees to put in those when they are developed. But, uh, we need to know what streets you want to, want to have the plan covered. And it, it, you know, I, I think Eighth Street was on here. It's just a tiny little piece of that. But if the, if you've already got plants there, instance, you know, Market Street, we've already got maples going down Market. So then if, if we had to take out something or if it ever was to go further, then, then we would have a plan. We'd, we'd have something, something in the works.
And Eighth Street, I guess I'm confused. Are you north, south?
I had a little area down there by Gary Queen.
Yeah, there's a small section, that's Seven. Uh, Eighth Street is the one that runs behind McKay's.
Yeah.
And there is a small section that is in the Urban Renewal Agency.
Oh, in that area. Okay, so if you're going to replace sidewalk there, we should know about it, we'll put it, we'll put it, uh, the right tree in there. So that, yeah, that. This meeting that we have coming up in March, if you could give us parameters on what streets, uh, if Eighth Street's a one block, then just tell us one block. If you could give us that, then, then let's put that into plan and then we'll give you trees to go in.
I can provide that. Now, uh, with that next question would be, you know, what about Central Avenue?
Yeah.
Going up and it ties into Ocean, Ocean all the way out to Empire, um, I think that would be a, a major corridor.
Yeah, if you were to put, if you were to put a tree in there, yeah, that should be in the corridor.
Which, I think with construction along that roadway, we probably would not be planting trees. Um, we don't have any city trees, uh, as defined by the Kus Bay Municipal Code because those city trees are only in the Urban Renewal Agencies.
Yes.
Um, but I think if.
I can envision at a time, so thinking about future development, if they were to, to build a new library on Ocean at the entrance of that property, I can imagine wanting to put some trees.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
For the sidewalks in that area. So just trying to be forward thinking on what might come in the future.
We can send.
Include that corridor.
We can send you folks a map, um, with the URA boundaries and we'll look to you and maybe provide guidance on there's additional streets and then give limits of where, where on those streets.
That work.
Okay. Okay, then let's get to the meat, the potatoes of this whole meeting. Section one corridor street trees. These, this one page are the trees that I would like to see on our corridor streets, which we just talked about. I would like to see you choose from this menu for those, for those streets. Uh, maples are the biggest, the biggest hit. Uh, we've got horse chestnut, there may be a spot for that. Maybe not, carpinas, a very good choice. Uh, beech, not crazy about it because of the bugs, but it should be on this list. There may be beeches, there's, there's a couple of nice beeches in the area. Uh, linden, I don't know that we have any lindens in, uh, in Kus Bay, but they're a nice tree. They're a very nice tree, especially the green spire. Um, the platinus, the sycamore, uh, that's something that if you do a, a whole, you do four, five blocks of them, it'd look beautiful. Uh, you wouldn't want just an individual. Um, and, and the pirates, like down there, down there at the shark bites and, and, um, Best Western, shanticleer, very nice tree. Uh, we planted a bunch of shanticleers.
Red spires are nice too.
Where?
The red spires.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I have a big one in my yard.
Yeah, and see, that's the sort of thing, if, if you said, okay, we need trees for this street, street, then that should come before the tree board and we could go, okay, what out of this list would you like to do? And then we'd have to find if they're available, uh, which most, most all of these trees would be, but they may come out of Washington, they may come out of, uh, Moats and Suns Up and Camby, it's, um, you, you'd have to find it, which is, which is another thing that the Armstrongs were always available. Um, uh, and the red maples for the most part are always available.
So I'm sorry, Rex, did you say that if somebody was to select one of these trees, would we take it before the tree board prior to uh, approval? Or is that what this list is giving staff the ability to say, yes, you can plant that for our tree board? That is on the approval tree list.
On this section one corridor planting, what I would like to see is Jennifer saying, we are going to tear up and we're going to redo Second Street. And now we're going to put in tree wells, bring it to the tree board. What would you recommend on this list we put there? And we could give you a tree.
So you're talking about a city capital project? You're not talking about private development?
No, 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 all this is city. Everything, everything to do with this meeting is cities, city streets and city, city stuff, wherever you go.
We get a lot of private development though, that's adjacent for developing or, or redeveloping the adjacent right of it, and that could include private trees. Private trees, that could include planting of trees. So I, I, and, and by all means, we'll do what you guys want us to do as far as taking, um, your recommendation to the board's director and city council. The council is going to push back on anything that's going to delay us issuing a permit. And rightly so.
Yeah.
Uh, we have actual laws in which we have to process and admit a permit and you guys need quarterly. So private development is going to be difficult. Um.
Uh, Jennifer, in the past, I know that there have been a couple of different areas in town here that were going to be developed. And, um, to kind of address Mark's thing with the landscape, the, yeah, master plan and the landscape design, what they were planning to plant there was not going to be appropriate for what they were doing because the, the landscape architects were from out of the area.
Sure.
They didn't know what it looked like here.
See it all the time.
And it came, it came before the board and I know for Rex and I both, um, water, the water treatment plant, one thing that they did, they're going to do down over here, um, that had all the strange, uh, grasses and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Stuff in it. Um, and we just, we said, uh-uh, that isn't going to work because first of all, these varieties don't grow here, don't grow well here. And they don't suit the, the area with which they're planting in. And that basically was, um, the type of properties that you're talking about.
That's why Greg and I need a list, so we can help facilitate those private projects. Or a master plan, but I think we're a ways away from developing your master plan or I, I you could be this person, getting funding to develop a master plan.
But I think Jennifer's point, for us at a staff level and for the tree board, I mean, for capital improvement projects, yeah, we can absolutely bring, you know, hey, we're projecting out to do this project next summer, either the country we propose to plant. Thumbs up, down times situation. But I think at a staff level, be it the, uh, the, the private developer wants to build adjacent to the right way and plant some trees along their new frontage. Um, we need a list that we can say, yes, you can plant one of these trees, um, adjacent to your property, you know, on the right way. That's what we.
Okay.
And so what, but, you know, we, what we don't want to do is have to, um, delay that development.
No.
Right, and we understand that.
And, yeah.
So looking at the guidance that we have in the tree board's governing documents for the city and Rex's list, to me, it seems like what we need to do in the interim before our next meeting is to take the Rex, Rex's list here and assign sizes to those to make sure that we've got a couple of options within the small 30 foot, medium, 40 foot, large tree, 50 foot. And then making sure that once we get them into those categories, that they align with the requirements that are outlined in the city code for planting, facing, making sure, you know, there are some, uh, minimum and requirements for distance between the trees in these areas, um, some hurbage about distance from street corners, then making sure that these particular species will look nice in that arrangement. Um, and I think that would help get us to where you're asking us to be, where there's a list.
Yeah, if you turn the page to where we are, Rex has already done it for us.
Okay, great.
Well. Yeah, and, and we're mainly concerned with this, this corridor planting, uh, uh, however, um, however, we need to, these other two need to be addressed in that, um, because it, coming back to the very beginning of this, if, if I walk in with a set of plans and you tell me that I have to stick the list, it's not, it's not going to work. Um, and as long as, whether it's a developer or a designer or whoever, cheap with plastic, very good example, this next week we'll be planting, um, uh, Norway maples on, next to 101, um, which is within the right way of that, of that planting or of, of that development. I would, I would want to know, yes, I could go ahead and plant that. That's why this list is so important. Now, if somebody come in and said, well, we're developing a new street, maybe it's a, maybe it's a, a contractor that, um, doesn't have a plan and he said, what would you recommend? And that might, if it's in the, if it's in his corridor zone, kick it out to the tree board and let us say, well, these are your choices. I, you know, I, it's a small area, um, maybe you don't want a great big maple. Maybe you don't want a great big oak, you know, maybe you, maybe you do a shanticleer, uh, pear. Um, then we could, we could provide that, that mechanism. Does that make sense?
It does, but if I'm hearing you right, if a developer comes in, you're saying in, in order to decide what tree to plant, we have to, we get up to the tree board, that's going to delay processing the plants. That's why we're asking for a list.
Okay, if I came in and said, Jennifer, I'm planning, I'm planting these maples in the, in the, in the corridor, it's on the list, you'd be okay with that?
That's what we're asking for.
Okay, and that, and that is, that's great. What I'm talking about is a person that may not know, which is probably very seldom, but they may not know, well, what, you know, then they can kick it to the tree board, what would be your suggestion? They're not going to wait up two months to get a permit and we shouldn't hold that up a minute. I know how that goes. Um, but yeah, if they choose from this list, or, or talk to, you know, talk to an individual that knows.
And if they want to, there's an appeal process. If they want to deviate from that, then they would choose, they're choosing to deviate, so they're choosing to go take the time and come to the tree board to leave their case.
Right. If the, if the skateboard shop wants to put in the palm and they come and said, hey, look, this is, this makes sense to my business, well, okay, we would have to listen to that. And I, and I think rightfully so.
So where is the area where it's divided with 30, 40 and 50 feet? I'm not seeing.
Oh, that's it, and that's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
It's, it's back here. But hey, on this, on this ordinance thing, the thing that I, and I don't know, maybe we missed this because it's in the ordinance, but the thing that, that really is important to me here, Jennifer, is, is the, uh, where is it? Is the tree detail. We need that tree detail in here. Because, uh, we had a bad time down there with, with, uh, commercial. Replace a point, okay, okay, 2.5, 8.30.070, 2.5. Planting of street trees and sidewalks must abide by street tree planting detail. That's this detail. I would like to see this in all of your, in all of your sidewalk stuff. That detail. That's how we get the, the, the two pieces of rebar in the sidewalk, that's how we get the metal band around the tree. And that is mostly important to me. Because there's nothing saying that now. Does that make sense?
I, I understand what you're asking. That was, and so it all goes down to the, the, the Kus Bay Municipal Code update, because we would have to add a detail.
Okay, yeah, because I see this has just been updated this, this year. Oh, well, it says down here, under appeal, Kus Bay Municipal Code, uh, passed January 10th, 24.
Yeah. What page are you down?
Oh, it's the last page under appeals.
Something in there was updated, yes.
Okay.
Rex, I have a question just for clarity. So looking at your notes here in the sections from the code, it looks like you're suggesting that the code be updated so that it no longer refers to those three size classes, small, medium and large, and instead we have these lists that are categorized as corridor streets.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, residential, okay.
Yep, yep.
I follow now, okay.
Yeah, and, and the reason for that, um, is because, um, let's, let's, let's get this whole ball of wax in, in one here. Because somebody may come in and they're Empire and they want to, they want to plant a tree in the right way. let's, let's, let's get this whole ball of wax in, in one here, because somebody may come in and they're Empire and they want to, they want to plant a tree in the right way. Um, uh, and, and, but it's between their house and the street. Well, then it needs to come out of section two. Maybe you have a person that comes in that says, hey, nothing's going in the alley behind this. It's just a bunch of brush. We're going to clear it out. I'd like to put a tree in there so we get a little bit more privacy. Then that's section three.
Gotcha.
Um, so anyway, section, we don't need to pay a lot of attention to second, section two and three, but I would like to have them included. Our, our main focus here is section one and these, these trees. Do we need to add or delete any of this on this list?
On section, for section one?
Section one, corridor street trees.
So section one, just to be clear, corridor, corridor, corridor street trees. That's a tough one to say. It's going to be basically the urban renewal agency areas. Um, and any other corridors this body identifies, um, as needing to be considered as a, as a corridor.
It's basically this, and I don't think you can leave out Eastside on that. That's state owned property that now the city maintains.
Eastside is in the U R A. There's Port that Sixth Avenue, Coos River Highway.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then if it's in at your goal. Okay, yeah, but that would be, those would be, that would get us in the ballpark of what we, what we need to, need to know for, you know, you got the streets, you got the trees, that should do it. And now we just need to to agree with that and take that to city council and says, this is what we'd like to do. And on top of that, I would like these few little incitements put in here. We need the details. Uh, we need a one-year warranty on trees, um, small things, but I think it's important.
So when we do a capital improvement project or we do, like, just to say, for instance, like, commercial, two projects still. Those trees do have a one-year warranty associated with it. That's just regular, uh, uh, than they do. And so all the projects that we do at a city level does, will have that requirement of a one-year warranty. That has to be maintained through that one year. It's not just plant it, come back in here and see if it survived. Whereas.
And we do walkthroughs, um, at month ten or eleven, just to identify any potential punchless items for that one-year warranty.
Does the warranty specify that it's not for damage that's done by other?
Yeah, it's a car, cars.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's, there's limitations within the warranty. I mean, if, 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 let's just say, you know, we go out and plant a tree tomorrow and the very next day somebody comes out and vandalizes, I can't really hold the contractor responsible for that.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, or it's, except for, but so for ten months, if somebody goes out there and chainsaws it down.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, and I can't control what, it's not the contractor's responsibility.
I, I guess, I guess my biggest issue for this, and, and this does not pertain to city street trees, but it does pertain to people coming from out of town and planting the school district is, is just ridiculous. What they did at Melocoma and Eastside and up here at Marshfield, they planted it and they left. And you ask them to come back? No way.
That's private development and, and we can't.
I know.
Yeah, I mean, we can't, I mean, it'd be tough for us to, to say you have to warrant that tree on private property.
Yeah, if you have it warranted on city property, then, then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All, all the work that we do, it does carry a one-year warranty.
Okay.
And then here's the fun part, is it was, if, if, hey, that tree is damaged or it doesn't survive, you know, not through any acts of anybody else, but just then you have another one-year warranty on that tree.
Yeah.
Uh, and so until it, until that one year, until it satisfies the one-year.
Yeah. So we got the streets, we got the trees, what do you need?
So I, I think I need, um, residential, small, mid-sized trees. I think the only, the only question I have is, I'm really unsure about what entails, uh, residential, small, mid-sized trees.
Well, and, and is that something we can do for discussion for a later date? Do we concentrate on getting this U R A and corridor street trees list approved? Ran through council, get it, uh, get it approved so we can? Right now, we're just dealing with old outdated information. And, and then and then I know you guys are all really busy, but I'm seeing some issues here with, with the, with the language and nothing major, um, that I think we should talk about. And, and again, I just want you to hear maybe staff's concerns. At the end of the day, we'll, we'll take up the flagpole, whatever you guys want us to do. But, um, do we save the code audit or the, 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 for another work session? It's up to you. We still have twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes.
Well, I think right at the moment, at least from my perspective as the board, um, the, the, the tree list is, is the major thing.
Major thing.
Yeah.
So then, then my next question then for you, um, is do you want to then concentrate on the other two sections? Or would you like to call it a win and just run the corridor, the U R A and corridor streets?
The section one trees.
Section one trees, thank you.
I think the section one tree would be a huge win. The only thing is, I wouldn't want to go to city council over and over and over again, like, ah, it's a tree guy. Uh, and try to keep bringing these things up. Um, and, and section two isn't, isn't as important to me as section three. It's just that if we don't say something and, and somebody comes in and wants to, wants to plant a tree and you go, whoa, whoa, wait a minute, you're putting a cotigri eye out there and that's not on this list. I, I, I would like to avoid that.
Well, I wish Carmen was here, but I don't think you'll ever see council complaining about a board or commission. I don't think you'll ever see.
It'd probably be a reprieve.
Yes, so, so, and we can, at staff, and then we'd love it if you guys were there when we did take this to council.
Yeah.
And we can also kind of not, not warn them, but say, hey, we, we, the tree board's got a heavy lift here. They want to maybe look at a master plan. They want to look at a code audit or update. So you're going to see us to get on this. We can even lay the groundwork for you.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect. And I think we ought to do it in steps.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm listening to everybody else.
I think you guys did a fantastic job. I think what we, the only thing we have to hammer out between now and March, and I think we can do it via email, is what are the additional streets outside of the U R A boundaries? So we'll send you that map and you guys just provide feedback.
And, and I think the others, the other thing is, is that there is a pretty robust tree list here on the section one corridor streets. Um. Is it the board's intention to approve all of these?
Yeah.
Species and subspecies? Or, okay, I just want to make sure that, that the, that the, uh.
Yeah, it provides a variety instead of this really super short list that's made from page here, you know, that was originally.
Can I ask, can I ask just one question, Rex and Corbin? Um. Mark, so sorry, um, and Haley. The, uh, are any of these trees, you know, we had, we talked about a year and a half ago, maybe, maybe two years ago, uh, about the Emerald Ashmore, uh, that invasive insect, ovation species insect. Are any of these trees that are on section one susceptible to that, um, ashmore, uh, um, insect, invasion of species?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all. Maybe we would consider uh, something within this that says, if, if a certain species that we do use becomes subject to an invasive, uh, insect or bug, whatever it might be, then we stop using that. We will continue to use it. And then one other thing is wherever there's an argument on a tree, we put in an Asian pear. Because they're rotten.
It's a dispute. It shall be settled with.
Yeah, Asian pear, yeah.
That's funny. Um, I would like to think just because I am, uh, here more as a resident and someone who might be, you know, coming upon this as more of a layperson. Um, I know that we're looking at changing the categories of trees rather than having them by size to the location, which I think is smart and support doing that. But I think it would be helpful to perhaps still divide or provide some categorization of these so that, um, it might reduce staff question and help guide, uh, people in their decision-making on what to plant, because we will still have these restrictions on, you know, distance from the curb and uh, planting, uh, closer to street corners and those sorts of things will still exist in the code. And so kind of providing some guidance via our list of options on how to work within those options.
So we do have a, a, uh, a vision clearance requirement in our municipal code that kind of outweighs, you know, a specific height of anything within that vision zone.
Yeah.
And I believe that trees are, are not to be planted within thirty feet of a, a court.
Right, yeah, yeah. This says, in this part of our tree code says that they shall not be planted closer than thirty five feet of the street corner. So, um, but just so that if, you know, I'm looking at this list, I know that these trees are of varying sizes. And probably, I mean, within a window, but maybe thinking about, uh, them in terms of not just height, but also in circumference. Well, there can be, yeah, yeah.
That, that's true, like, I, I don't, I don't think you ever mentioned that, you know, Newmark used horse chestnuts all the way to the end. And, uh, that, I would question that. That's going to get awful big, especially in front of the hotel there. That's going to get awfully big and awfully wide. Now, you can keep hammering them back and, and turning them, but ideally you put in a tree and, and limit up the first couple of years and then just let it do its thing.
Right.
Um, as far as, as sizes, uh, corridor one here, these are all big trees and these are all long-lived trees. These are trees that you could expect to get a hundred years out of. Um, section two, that, that changes. A dogwood, uh, flowering plum, you might get, uh, you know, you might get thirty years out of. But these are, these are big roads, big trees.
So you say big trees. Do I need to be concerned about like aggressive roots and getting into storm and sewer?
Not at all.
Trees and, uh.
What about, what about leaves and, and, and leaves dropping into the street? I mean, are any of these trees going to be like heavy, heavy droppers? Of leaves?
Well, um, some, some are worse than others, like tulip tree will absolutely vary, but it's not on the list. Um, some are worse than others. Maples are kind of in the middle. Um, oaks are the very first, uh, the very last to come out, the very last to leave, uh, lose their leaves. Um, but, but, you know, and I, I, I disagree with council, um, putting that all on the, on the, the owner of property, part of it, you know, and for, for years, since ninety-two, people have complained about, oh, you have planted trees and they get on my roof. Well, that's just simple building maintenance. If you own the building, you should get up, you should go up and inspect that your roof once a year anyway. So, you know, I have a tough time with that and I have a real tough time with the maintenance people that come into my yard and say, hey, man, I got a lot of leaves. What do I do with them? Blow them out in the street? And now I gotta say, no, you can't do that. Before I could say, if they're on the sidewalk, they're on city property, you can blow them to curb. But now with the way they've changed this, it's, it's all, um, uh, it's all on the owner. The owner or his maintenance person. But honestly, um, uh, you, you know, the, the leaves on the roof. I just, I think that's a building maintenance thing. You should check your gutters once a year anyway.
Right. Where's Carmen when we need you? Um, just to maybe defend the council, um, that they've we had conflicting language in our code, and so there's just kind of unconflicted that language. So our code says the adjacent property responsible will maintain, um, the right of ages into their property. That includes the sidewalk. So this code, this, this, that change there, that, that simple change that the council made with respect to the leaves on the sidewalk, that was just making it consistent with the code that is in a couple of other places throughout.
Yes.
So it, that, it was, it was more housekeeping too, I think.
Well, I can, I can envision the, uh, the landscape people of, in fact, I've seen it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, the vacuums are
Blowers.
Blowers, blowing everything from the whole front yard and everything out into the street. And, and that's not appropriate because that, that, that tree belonged on the property.
Agreed.
Anyway.
They're, they're there to do a job, um, you know.
Yeah.
Blow it out into the street or, or, you know, pick it up.
I mean.
Part of the job.
We have one person solely dedicated to driving a street sweeper and it's still not enough. I mean, and that street sweeper is two hundred fifty thousand dollars and it has a shelf life. It's only, it's only really spent the last, what, six to seven, seven years, six, seven years? And that's not the annual maintenance.
No, it's, it's expensive to maintain.
That has to be done to it. It just doesn't stop. It runs forty plus hours a week.
Yeah, I, I.
I, I hear what you're saying. I just, I'm trying to give you something else.
Tell us this morning in City in Earth Band, you got a couple of yards of soil. And I said, so what do you do about leaves? And he said, well, he said, we, we run around twice a year with a pickup and a couple of guys in the scoop shovel and clean the drains. And he says, otherwise the, the street, you know, the sweeper gets arrested. But he said, we, we clean the drains and that seems to be the biggest problem. Um, and that, you know, the city hasn't got any bigger and we used to never have this problem. I don't know if you remember the old guy with the gold tube that used to drive the street sweeper this back in the eighties.
Well, I think, I, I think, uh, now you, you have homeowners that are just dumping wheelbarrow loads of leaves out in town in the, out in the middle of the street.
That's wrong.
And the, and the neighbor of, you know, he's calling because he's mad because he's doing the right thing with his leaves and.
Yeah.
I guess my husband is good then because he, he vacuums the whole yard.
Yeah, yeah, your lawnmower can pick all that up. Same time you, you know.
Yes, he's a.
It's mulch, it's.
He has a yard vacuum that, that looks like a lawnmower.
Oh, fancy, yeah.
And, oh, he brought you to have.
Yeah.
And anyway, he goes, he does the neighbor's trees, you know, the. Well, good work, guys. So I, I guess we can go ahead and have them go ahead and plan this for the agenda for the meeting, uh, with this list of trees.
Okay.
And, um.
And Greg will send out a map and try to get, try to get that tied down before March and.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
And we'll have it on the agenda.
Yeah.
And then we'll leave it up to you guys. Ask if you want a work session for April to talk about co-admissions or wherever else. You guys, you guys just make the request and we'll accommodate.
All right, great.
Good.
Good work, guys.
We got something done.
Thank you. Exactly.
Thank you, Rex, for the, for the pizza.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you for the pizza rack.
Yeah, I, I thought you were. It's okay. Take, take one of your own, if you want.
We had, you know, we already had lunch.
Yeah, officially interned. Yes, officially interned.
Okay.
Officially interned.
Thank you, everybody.
That'll be good. Streets, streets knocked down.
Rex, there's a lot of coos in here.